And I'll call the meeting to order. And we're going to start with introductions of the Planning Commission members. We'll start down there with the councilman.
I'm John Lyszewski, District 3 Councilman.
I'm Les Tillery, Fuquann Partners Architects.
Vince Dickens, Army Contracts.
Sharon Tyson, Community Volunteer.
Kelly Scrimshaw, Mayor Battle's Office.
Janet Watson, Retired Builder and Developer.
Gary Whitley, Huntsville Utilities.
Peggy Richard, Realtor.
Kimberly Battle, MR Deck.
Kyle Collins, Colliers.
Jeffrey Rice, Lieutenant Huntsville Police Department.
Jim, we got the Planning Department.
And I'd like to welcome Jim. This is his first night with the Planning Commission. Jim's our new manager of the Planning Services Division of the Planning Department. Most of us are used to seeing Marie Bostick down at that end, and if we call you Marie, we'll try not to do that. Jim comes from the Zoning Administration Division where he served as the Zoning Enforcement Coordinator. Welcome aboard, and we look forward to working with you. Our first, well, just a little bit of information for you. If you haven't been here before, probably some of you have and some of you haven't. First, we will have public hearings, and when an item comes up on the agenda that you're here about, if you would go to one of the microphones on either side of the room and give your name and address for the record, and then you can tell us what your concerns are about whatever that agenda item is. I would ask that if there's more than one person here to speak about a particular item on the agenda, that you not repeat what someone has just said previously about that item. Our first item of business is adoption of minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Some minutes.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are adopted. Public hearings. Our first item is the Bridges and Research Park Phase 2, a re-subdivision of Lot 2 of the Bridges and Research Park, a minor. Is there anyone here to speak with regard to the bridges? Hearing no comment, public hearing's closed. Item 2, Cross Creek Phase 5, has been withdrawn, but if you are here, if you did come for that particular item, received notice and came for that, we'd be happy to hear your Hearing no comment, that public hearing is closed. Item 3, the Crossing at Jones Valley.
Public hearing remains open.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. The public hearing remains open on Cross Creek Phase 5. It is not closed. Item 3, the Crossing at Jones Valley, a minor zoning plat. Is there anyone here to speak with regard to the Crossing at Jones Valley? Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed. Item 4 is Huntington Place Third Edition. That's been withdrawn. Again, if you're here, received notice, and you're here with regard to that item, you certainly may speak on it at this time. Hearing no comment, well, we're not going to close that one, we'll leave it open. Item 5, Iredale Subdivision Phase 2, again, has been withdrawn. Is there anyone here who came to speak with regard to Iredale? We will leave that one open, too. Item 6, Ledgestone, a re-subdivision of Track 7 and 8 of Old Gurley Farm. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Ledgestone? Yes, sir. Would you give us your name and address?
My name is Wayne Mears. I live at 2424 Highway 72 East. And my property adjoins Track 7 and 8 of the Old Gurley Farm.
Yes, sir.
And what I want to know is what are they going to do with all the wastewater that's coming off there?
Is the engineer here? Yes, sir. If we will address that. If you have any other questions, go ahead and let us know what they are, and then I'll ask the engineer to give you the information. Can you do that briefly in here, or would you like to? Let me see what else he has to question.
Well, that-
Is that it?
That section there is about, there's about a mile of road section there that only has one culvert to go under the highway.
Uh-huh.
It's a six-by-six box tunnel, and it already floods when, gets over that tunnel whenever it comes flash flood, because all that water comes off the backside of Montesano.
I think that you, the engineer, what's your name, sir?
Marshall Corleau.
Marshall Corleau. The engineer will be able to show you what they're planning to do with the water, and if you don't have any other questions regarding that right now, I'll let Mr. Corleau take you out into the other area and go over the plans with you.
There was one-
And we'll hold that public hearing open. But before you leave, let me ask if there's anyone else here to speak regarding Ledgestone. Do you have, do you have another question?
Well, there was one other thing. They said they were going to redo the road back there.
Redo the-
The Old Gurley Road.
Now, Mr. Corleau should be able to answer that, too, and would, in fact, why don't you just tell us, Mr. Corleau, if there's any plans to redo Old Gurley Road with, in connection-
No, we're going to add a deceleration lane and acceleration lane, but we're not, we're not going to totally redo that stretch of Old Gurley Road, no.
So it will be widened at the point of entrance-
Yeah, there will be-
And exit for the subdivision?
Yeah, there will be measures made to easier, easier for people to turn in and also to accelerate out and go to the east.
And those areas will be blended-
Yeah.
Together?
They'll be attached to the, to the existing road.
Okay. And your plans have, have been approved by engineering as to water flow and everything?
Yes.
Okay. If you would give Mr. Mears the information on that, I don't mean to rush you, but do you have another question? I don't, do you have another question?
No, I guess that's pretty much it.
I will continue, hold that public hearing open, and Mr. Corleau can show you how the water will be collected on the plans, and, and then when you come back in, if you still have questions, we will, the public hearing will still be open. And if you two are together, you can both go out and meet Mr. Corleau in the entrance. Okay? I thought you might be. Okay, we're holding item 6 open and proceeding to item 7, the Preserve at Wheeler, a re-subdivision of a part of Track 3A of William Wheeler Estates. Are, that's Williams Wheeler Estates. Is there anyone here to, to speak with regard to the Preserve at Wheeler? Hearing no comment, the public hearing's closed. Item 8, Oakwood Phase 1 at Lake Forest, a re-subdivision of Lots 21 and 22, a minor. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Oakwood Phase 1 at Lake Forest? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item 9 is Overland Cove Phase 2, a re-subdivision of Track A of Overland Cove. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Overland Cove? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item 10, Sanctuary Cove Phase 5, a re-subdivision of Lots 1 and 2 of Sanctuary Cove. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Sanctuary Cove? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item 11, South Gate 2, has been withdrawn. If you received a notice of this item and came here to speak tonight, we'll hear your Okay, we'll leave that item, that withdrawn item, open. Item 12, Wilson Cove subdivision Phase 1. Is there anyone here regarding Wilson Cove subdivision Phase 1? Hearing no comment, the public hearing's closed. Our next item is location, character, and extent. Item A, Goldsmith Schiffman Wildlife Sanctuary sign and entrance. Is there anyone here regarding Goldsmith Schiffman Wildlife Sanctuary sign and entrance? Hearing no comment, the public hearing's closed. Item B, Huntsville High School Freshman Academy Phase 3B Athletic Renovations. Is there anyone here to speak regarding the Huntsville High School Freshman Academy Athletic Renovations? Hearing no comment, the public hearing's closed. Our next item, zoning. Lisa Letto will give us the information on it.
The first item we have on the agenda is the Andrews Annexation Zoning. This is located on the east side of Highway 431 South and on the north side of Caldwell Lane. It's the hatched area that you see here. It's a total of 17.19 acres, and the proposed zoning is Highway Business C4 District, which is consistent with the other zoning along the highway in that area.
Is there anyone here to speak regarding Andrews Annexation Zoning? Hearing no comment, the public hearing's closed. Our next item B is Brady Annexation Zoning. Lisa?
This is on the south side of Olmsted Road and west of Taylor Road. The proposed zoning is Residence 1A District for 1.36 acres. It's the hatched area that you see here. We also have these on Google Maps, if you like.
Yay.
There we are. It's the little area bordered by the square there.
Oh, that's so great, to see that on a Google map. Is there anyone here to speak with regard to Brady Annexation Zoning? Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed. Our next item is Attitude 2 Rezoning. Lisa?
This is located on the east side of Quality Circle and north of Governor's West. The requested rezoning is from Research Park Applications District to Research Park Commercial District for 10 acres. It's the hatched area that you see here.
Is there anyone here to speak regarding Attitude 2 Rezoning? Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed.
The next item we have is the Linden Plan Development Amendment. This is a major change to the Linden Plan Development. It's zoned, plan development housing with a land use intensity ratio of 45-50, and this request is to add uses, permitted uses within the plan development. When a development is first zoned, plan development housing district, they have to submit a packet, which includes various things with the development. It's, it's almost in final form, and one of the things that they have to submit is a list of permitted uses. And at the time, he did submit, the developer did submit a list of permitted uses, and since then, as the development has gone on, there have been requests for people wanting to locate their establishments within this district, and so he's requesting that we add some permitted uses to the Linden Plan Development. And those uses are to add hotels, acute long-term care facilities, on-off premises beer and table wine retailers without entertainment, and an on-off premises beer and wine retailer, you could have, you could drink the beer and wine onsite, you could also purchase beer and wine to take offsite. A Class 1 lounge liquor retailer without entertainment is a permitted use. Now, a Class 1 lounge liquor retailer, you can serve liquor, beer, and wine on premises. Also add the following under the Restaurants category, and restaurants were already permitted under Linden's permitted uses, but this adds entertainment to those restaurants. Restaurants, as restaurants are defined in zoning ordinance, including on-off premises beer and table wine retailers, retailers that qualify as a restaurant, are permitted to have entertainment, as entertainment's defined in the zoning ordinance, provided that the licensed premises is not within 500 feet of the boundary of any residential zoning district that is currently developed or will in the future be developed for residential use, and is not a part of Linden. And then restaurants that are within 500 feet of the boundary of a residential district would have to follow these guidelines, and these are the same that you see in our Neighborhood Business C1 District. The entertainment shall be, shall not be audible outside the interior of the licensed premises. No entertainment shall be permitted, no entertainment shall be audible in the area of any private sidewalk, courtyard, or patio seating, and no entertainment shall be permitted after 11:00 PM. And all those uses, permitted uses, that would be within the transect 5. And transect 5, if you remember, is their commercial district within Linden. And within Linden as well, add the following uses. Entertainment, as entertainment is defined in the zoning ordinance, is permitted outdoors on private property within Linden, provided that there is a minimum separation of 500 feet between the outer boundary of the licensed premises or of the outer boundary of the designated performance area, whichever is closer to the Linden boundary, and the boundary of any residential district that is currently developed or will in the future be developed is for residential use and is not a part of Linden. And also add the following conditions under permitted uses. For all alcoholic beverage licenses establishments within Linden, no alcoholic beverages shall be served, offered, or dispensed between the hours of midnight and 10:00 AM on any day.
Is there anyone, is that all of that change?
That would be, that was, this change is strictly to change the list, or add to the list of permitted uses.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak regarding the changes to the Linden Plan Development? Hearing no, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yes, I'm Wayne Sutton. I live at 1204 Four Mile Post Road, Jones Valley. And the letter that we got in the mailing talked about the hotels and the rezoning, and our question was, how will that affect our property at 1204 Four Mile Post Road, which sits right next to the bridge? Will there be, where will the main entrance go in and out of the new uses? And I noticed on there there was a large amount of public parking in there, and I wondered where would be the access from our road to that? Would it be a stoplight there? Will the road be, remain like it is? Three-lane? How will that affect that?
I can't answer the question about the stoplight, but I can ask Ms. Letto to, to answer the other part of your question.
This is a map of Linden Plan Development. Four Mile Post here is to the south. This area here is Jones Farm Park. We have Carl T. Jones here to the north, and Garth Road here to the west. The, what we were talking about, the permitted uses, the additions would be within transect 5, which is the transect here, a small piece here, and the piece here. So those added uses would be within these transects. The access would be off the existing street pattern that you see here to these businesses. And we were just talking about the 500-foot separation. The areas that you see here bordered in this rust color, those are where those uses could be, could have entertainment outside. Those are 500 feet from the nearest residential district. But as far as the access, it would be, remain the same as for the other uses within those Then the road patterns would change.
Lisa, I, I am sorry, I could not see the cursor when you pointed out to him where, where the areas were that-
The 500-foot separation from-
No, the transect 5.
Oh, transect 5, I'm sorry. That's this area here.
I am sorry, there's-
Transect 5, it is difficult to see.
Yeah, it's, can you change your cursor, your pointer, to an arrow?
I don't know.
You don't know how? I don't either.
How about a finger? Yeah. This is transect 5, right here.
Okay, I can see the transect, but now that you enlarged it, I can see the-
And then this here is transect 5.
Okay.
And there's a very small triangle, transect 5, right here. Yeah, they say T5.
Okay, all right.
Lisa, the question that the gentleman had, it appears the closest entry point that will be added out of Linden to his, his residence on Four Mile Post is on Garth there, correct? On, on the west side, just west of that bottom red triangle that's drawn?
Garth is over here.
Right.
And he's on Four Mile Post.
Right, exactly. So the, the closest new cut through, oh, is, is that going to be a main perimeter road there where you're pointing?
Yes, this is, this is part of the adopted plans.
Okay, so there will be that and a new road cut in on the west there on Garth, correct?
Right here.
Mm-hmm.
You can stay here. You can stay here. Go up here?
No, you can, you can stay here.
Help me out.
Okay.
We were speaking about my house a little earlier, Lisa, so it was good to get to know you a little bit. And so far, I got waterfront property now. Thought I had that. We're real excited about that, and it's turned out real good. And my wife can lay on the bed upstairs and look out across those legs for out back to the mountains, so.
It's nice.
We never thought that would happen, but we are concerned about traffic, and we know this project is really going to be a great project. We think we're going to beat Providence, and we're going to beat everything in Huntsville. But the hotels were a concern, and Lisa told me a little bit about that. We knew they would be really upscale, and that's good.
Yeah, here's the interesting part.
But, but the, but the really thing that I was concerned about when I looked at this, there's one set 80 cars and one set 90 cars, public parking, coming off of that road, that access road. That access road from Milestone is where the road connects. Milestone Drive and that road connect, and so that road is down from my house, so, you know, if I get a stoplight there and traffic is stopped all the time, I hope that doesn't happen. If that happens, you know, I may have to move and maybe get to know some people too That's kind of what I'm concerned about, but I think the idea is to keep the traffic flowing on, on Four Mile Post as it is now. Is that correct?
I don't know of any change proposed for Four Mile Post.
And there's four points of egress and access into this development, and that's the beauty of a grid pattern. You have Carl T. Jones to the north, you have two access points on Garth Road on the west, and then one on Four Mile Post on the south.
Okay, I guess my question is, those two public parking places where they can come in off of Four Mile Post Road and go up and park into those two public parking places, will they be able to go out the other way, or will they all be coming out on Four Mile Post Road? Or will they have a choice of going out the different ones?
In fact, just the parking spaces for the park itself, or?
No, no.
I guess I'm not following you.
Well, on your, on your, on the list, we got right here, it shows that there's public parking right in here.
Yeah, and well, I mean, there's no-
Yeah, when we look on the internet. Side maps. There was more. Okay, and there was-
I can answer those questions better than that. And that's what our concern was.
If there's parking down there, I'm concerned about it, too. Other than for the-
Oh, okay.
Other than for the park.
Oh, okay.
There, there will be a new road cut into the park, parking off of Linden Park Main, so all that traffic will, and rather than have two coming out on Four Mile Post Road, there'll be one.
John, John, just for the record, since you're speaking, would you give us your name and address, please? Pretty please.
I'm John Blue, and my address is 5003 Garth.
Thank you. And I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I-
I'm, I'm through. Unless you have another question.
So at, you're coming out, where it's going to come out of there will connect with Milestone. Is that right?
Is Milestone the street across-
Milestone is the street that, where they got it right now, where they paved it right now. Milestone is the street across the street from-
Right here?
Right here, yeah. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Now, this, this parking lot, we've expanded it a little bit.
And it's just going to have an entrance up there, so it's going to have an entrance off of Four Mile Post, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the entrance, the present entrance that we showed. So they don't have two coming out.
Two, okay, good.
As requested, yeah. There will be one, two, three, four, maybe just out of Linden, so it has to be just go off there. At, at one all, all the time, yeah. But that one there, you expect there'll be a, we're hoping there won't be a light there.
Well, there's supposed to be one up on Carl T. Jones.
Right.
Now, if the traffic count warns one here-
That'll be, that'll be what?
The city.
That's what the-
Right now, it doesn't warn.
Right now, it doesn't warn. And what about Four Lane, Four Mile Post Road coming off of all this? There's no plan for that at this point?
Four Mile Post Road has got a major street plan, basically is going to loop over and connect into a market road at some time in the future, so.
Been talked about for a while.
It's been talked about for a long time, yeah. And it's going to have to happen, you know, with as much development on the valley, eventually, you know, you're going to have to have another exit.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Hal Fulmer, 2815 Carl T. Jones Drive, and we support the Linden Development. I represent some residents who live at Brookdale Place, a retirement community there. We've talked to Mr. Blue and his group, and we support the development. It's a good project, we think adds to the neighborhood there. Would like to add some support for a traffic light at the appropriate time out on Carl T. Jones, just as this gentleman stated, just entrance and exit from that property with the additional traffic, concerned about that, and so whatever, as soon as it's practical to put something there, we would, we would really appreciate that. And then have just one small concern about the entertainment in the area. I think it's outside of 500 feet, there is no limitation on the hours of entertainment, and we would request that there be some consideration to a timeframe attached to the entertainment that could be provided in that area, say 11:00 PM. I think there's already a limitation on the sale of alcohol within certain hours and some sort of limitation on entertainment to kind of dampen the noise at a certain time, we, we think would be helpful.
Um.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Lisa, would you, or John, would you clarify about that, the entertainment time?
Yeah, I spoke with the Brookdale people, and they are concerned about the 11 o'clock inside the area for the entertainment district, and they asked me if I'd consider doing 11 o'clock curfew, and I thought about it, and I really don't have a problem with that. I think 11 o'clock is probably plenty late for the bands to crank up. I know downtown, they go to 2 o'clock in the morning, and I've had some pushback from people that live here that have a problem with that. So I think 11 o'clock is fine with me if you want to try to put that into the ordinance, to just have a blanket 11 o'clock curfew.
Thank you. Can we amend that to tonight, Lisa?
Yeah, currently, it applies to the entertainment of restaurants. No entertainment shall be permitted after 11:00 PM. But as John just said, we can also add that under the entertainment on the private property as well. No entertainment shall be permitted after 11:00 PM.
Okay. I would remind, when, when a motion comes, that needs to be a part of the motion when we get to that part of our meeting. Are there any other questions regarding the Linden Plan Development? No other speakers. Hearing no further speakers, the public hearing is closed. Kimberly Battle, would you give us the subdivision committee report?
Yes, ma'am. The subdivision committee met on, uh, May 21st, 2014, following our recommendations. The first item, the Bridges and Research Park Phase Two, re-subdivision of Lot Two of the Bridges and Research Park a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots, move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And, uh, Kimberly, would you hold up just a minute? Uh, we still have an open hearing that I forgot, uh, Mr. Corley and Mr. Mears. Is Mr. Mears here?
They, they left.
Did they leave?
They were, said they were satisfied with, uh, our response.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone, you, you didn't tell them they couldn't come back in, did you? Is there anyone else here to speak, uh, regarding, um, Ledgestone re-subdivision? Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Thank you. I'm sorry, Kimberly.
Problem.
Second item, Chestnut Glen Apartments, the committee recommends layout and preliminary approval on forty-one units. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself from this.
Okay. Uh, uh, do we have... Pardon? We didn't come to Ledgestone yet. Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, Vince, you need to recuse, um... We did, we had the last one. We... Okay. Um, Vince Dickens is recused on item two. Uh, and, uh, is there any discussion? Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is also presented for boundary plat approval on forty-one lots, uh, forty-one units, move to approve.
Uh, do we hear a second?
Second.
Is it ready for final, Mr. McGuffey?
It's just boundary plat, it's not final.
Boundary plat, okay, we don't, we don't need that on boundary plat, okay. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Third item, Clarkson Square Apartments, re-subdivision of Lot Two of National Third Edition. The committee recommends layout and preliminary approval on fifty-six lots, fifty-six units. Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Fourth item, the Crossing at Jones Valley, it's a minor zoning plat, the committee recommends layout approval on one lot.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's also presented for final approval on one lot.
Move to approve.
Is it in order?
Uh, okay, I'm sorry. Mr. McGuffey or Mr. Webb?
It's in order.
It, it is in order, okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Fifth item, Grand Highlands Estates, Third Edition, presented for final approval on twenty-two lots.
Second.
I didn't...
Uh, any discussion?
I, I didn't motion a second, is it in order?
Wait a minute, did we have a... I heard a second, did we have a motion?
I didn't motion, there, there's no second yet.
Oh, okay, okay. Is it in order for final approval?
It is, with improvements to be installed by 5/2015 and sidewalks by 5/2015.
All right, move to approve.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sixth item on the agenda, Heritage Brook Subdivision Phase Two, a re-subdivision of a portion of Track Two of Heritage Brook Subdivision Phase One, presented for final approval on thirty-five lots.
Is this one in order for final approval?
Yes, ma'am, with improvements in sidewalks to be installed 5/2715.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seventh item, Ledgestone re-subdivision of Track Seven and Eight and on Old Gurley Farm. This one was forwarded without recommendation pending signature approval from Madison County Health Department. Was the approval received?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm, I, I am interested, uh, the gentleman raised a question about the, uh, water running down from the mountain. I was wondering what the response was in regards to that, or how that was clarified.
We showed him on the plans where we, we, uh, have designed a detention pond to carry, catch the water from the construction we're gonna do. Most of that water is actually downhill from, uh, from our development, and we'll be catching the water that now goes into there and detaining it and putting it in there at another place in the, uh, on the, in the stream.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eighth item, the Preserve at Wheeler, re-subdivision, oh, excuse me. Um, I did not include the waiver in the motion, so move to approve with the triple front at Lot Forty-Five, uh, on Lot Forty-Five and double front at Lots Forty-Two through Forty-Four, move to approve with a waiver on that.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry about that. Eighth item, the Preserve at Wheeler, re-subdivision of a tract of Track Three, Three A of Williams Wheeler Estates. The committee recommends re-p preliminary approval on one hundred and seventy lots, move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Oakwood Phase One at Lake Forest, re-subdivision of Lots Twenty-One and Twenty-Two a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot lines between Lots Twenty-One and Twenty-Two. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Tenth item, Overland Cove Phase Two, re-subdivision of Track A of Overland Cove. The committee recommends relayout and re-p preliminary approval on seventy lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot lines between Lot One Eighty-Six and the common area, non-radio lot lines between Lot One Eighty-Six and the common area, Lot One Eighty-Six and One Eighty-Five, and Lot One Seventy-One and One Seventy-Two. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleventh item, Sanctuary Cove Phase Five, re-subdivision of Lot One and Two of Sanctuary Cove. The committee recommends layout and preliminary approval on one hundred and seven lots with a waiver on the triple-fronted lots Twenty, Twenty-One, and double-fronted lots Eighteen, Nineteen, and Twenty-Two through Fifty, move through, move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Twelfth item, the Villas at Timber, Timbers Edge at Hampton Cove Apartments. This is presented for final approval on fifty-three, uh, units.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
That's final approval on, okay. Is this in order for final approval, Michael?
Yes, ma'am, with improvements to be 5/2215.
Move to approve.
Second.
Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thirteenth item is Wilson Cove Subdivision Phase One. This was forwarded without a recommendation pending approval of a sewer agreement, has that been approved?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving down to location, character, and extent, first item, Goldsmith Schiffman Wildlife Sanctuary sign at the entrance, at the entrance, a public hearing was held, uh, move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second item, Huntsville High School, Freshman Academy, Phase Three B Athletic Renovations, number eight sixteen. A public hearing was held, recommend for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, our next, uh, item of business is the zoning committee recommendations. Sharon Tyson, would you give us this?
Item number one is Andrews Annexation Zoning, a public hearing was held this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second item is Brady Annexation Zoning, a public hearing was held this evening.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Attitude Two Rezoning, a public hearing was held this evening.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, Linden Plan Development Amendment.
Move to approve.
Uh, we need a modi, an, um, an amendment on that motion.
Oh, we do.
The curfew.
Madam Chairman, I want, uh, an explanation on what the amendment actually is.
Uh, Lisa, would you, uh, go over that, please?
Yes, currently, there is, um, a restriction within the plan development as presented tonight that, um, under the restaurants that are permitted to have entertainment, the entertainment would have to end 11:00 PM. There was another request of an additional use within the plan development where there could be entertainment outside on private property, as long as they were not within 500 feet of a residential district. And for those areas that are permitted to have entertainment, they would like for the, uh, those areas to end the entertainment at 11:00 PM as well.
So if I'm to understand correctly, there's no entertainment allowed anywhere within 500 feet or beyond this development after 11:00 PM?
If it's within, not within the development, without the development.
That's what I'm saying, around the development.
If it's within 500 feet of another residential district, it has to be completely inside, it can't be audible outside. But this, this amendment would be for the entertainment that is audible outside the establishment, would all have to end at 11:00 PM.
And that's just for the restaurants, or...
Well, that would be for any entertainment on private property.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if it's in somebody's house.
No, just in the...
My house within Linden, if I'm having an outdoor... That's what I'm talking about. Garden party, um, it has to end at 11:00 PM.
Well, you, the entertainment, not, not the party.
I mean, it, it creates a, uh, to me, a indefensible, uh, uh, attack on the private property rights of a homeowner. I understand the logic, but you're basically telling a homeowner he cannot play a stereo in, in, in the strictest interpretation, that's why I wanted to hear this.
I understand what you're asking, and, and the way it's worded, it says licensed premises or outer boundary of the designated performance area, and that's meant for private business, not for a private home.
Not the homeowner. So this is, this amendment would say that the, that the private business, not the homeowner, would have to stop outdoor entertainment at 11:00 PM?
Yeah, it says, you know, a licensed premises, if you're a private homeowner, you shouldn't be a licensed premises.
Licensed.
But then it also, yeah, it says or designated performance area. So it, and, and we could reword that to, you know, to say that this does not apply to private residential...
Yeah, I, I just won't, do not, John, or, or Madam Chairman, I just don't wanna write bad law here, is all I'm trying to get around. Now...
Yes, sir.
I think, uh, this is meant, and I hope it's written in, but for an ongoing issue, like a restaurant or something having, uh, you know, a band three nights a week, for, uh, outside, especially the area that I've got as far as the canal is concerned. If we have music outside, we probably gotta go get a permit to have some type of festival or something for theirs. So it's, I think it's meant to, that not every night, or every other night, or during the weekends, to have band going, uh, going off, you know, to, uh, beyond that time period. So that's, that's...
And I fully agree with the intention. I'm just wanna make sure we do this the right way.
For the point of consistency, what is Providence right now? Cause it sounds like that's what we're trying to do, is this is going to be very similar to what Providence is doing. So what are the limitations and permitted uses in Providence right now?
Uh, Providence is permitted to have outdoor entertainment on their patios, uh, for patio seating for private establishments, as long as it's not within 500 feet of another residential district.
So for consistency, what's currently recommended without this new amendment is consistent with what is already occurring in our city, given the example of Providence, is that correct?
Well, as far as general outdoor entertainment, it is not addressed within Providence at this time. But in the future, we do want to make alcoholic beverage establishment uses and entertainment uses consistent within all of the planned development housing districts, we wanna make them all consistent. Linden is actually, is our second planned development that has commercial uses within it. So it's, we're learning as we go with Providence, and then Linden's adding a little more to the mix. So we do wanna keep them consistent in the future. Uh, but as for now, as far as outdoor entertainment, other than the restriction on the patio seating for the restaurants, there is nothing, uh, for Providence, other than city's no, noise ordinance, which applies citywide, of course.
And because the establishments are not actually built, this, my, my question may be hard to, to do. Have we, or can we, I guess we'd have to borrow a band, but, um, test the noise from one of those possible restaurant locations back to the distance of the Brookdale facility to see what the noise level would be, and if it's within, um, that range that we've discussed.
You don't wanna go there. It, it depends on the type of music, and whether or not you're gonna have acoustic, or whether or not you're gonna have amplified. Then you get into the whole to-do of the noise ordinance. This is simpler, and, and to be very honest, none of this actually precludes the noise ordinance, unless you get a special event permit by which you can go above and beyond, so, and it, and that may sound a little confusing, but...
Based on the way the map is drawn, I, I would think that if there was a noise concern, or, or possible concern, it would reach the residents within the development first before it would affect the, the community of Brookdale.
The noise ordinance is still in play. Just because you have, you're allowed to have entertainment within so many feet of a residence, the, the noise ordinance still holds. So if there were a complaint, they would probably go over and ask them to turn it down.
Uh, Lisa, can you show us on the map where Brookdale is?
Yes. Uh, the Brookdale facility is this large structure you see here. And then these are the patio homes along Summerby Drive.
Those, those are already existing.
They are.
And, and, and they're not called Brookdale, so we don't know if... Are they called Brookdale too? Okay. And then what about these houses, that's across Garth Road, right?
Yeah, this is on the west side of Garth Road.
Okay. Um, are we, can we tonight get, get that, uh, worded properly so that, so that we know, A, what we're voting on, and, and B, can make the amendment, uh, suitably?
Yes, what we can do is going back to the, that part of the ordinance that applies to entertainment within Linden, which is right there, uh, we can say that this does not apply to private residential dwellings.
I have a procedural...
It would apply, the, the 11:00 PM, um, ending time, if we're gonna add that, would apply to all commercial properties. But it would not apply, we can say that this does not apply to private residential dwellings.
I, I have a procedural question, so, I know it's possible to make an amendment on the fly, just based on Robert's rules voter. Typically, this body, when we have an amendment to something, it gets sent back. So I'm trying to understand, why are we pressured to make that amendment now, or why do we have to do it with this vote? Can it not be another amendment, you know, to change the permitted uses later on?
There's, there's no pressure here.
I, I just, I've just never seen us do this, not from you, you never pressure us.
I'd like to make a recommendation, I mean, this is to the detriment of the developer, but the developer has agreed, hey, I'll go along with it. I mean, any restriction on a developer is a bad restriction, so John has willingly said, hey, I, I'm willing to work with it. I would recommend that it goes back to committee, unless this is gonna, uh, hold up construction of any kind, hold up, uh, the development, and, and let's get the wording right, so we know what we're voting on. John?
Uh, that's, that's fine with me, um, I'm just trying to be a good neighbor, you know, but...
You've been a fabulous neighbor.
Uh, but anyway, uh, that'll, why don't we pass it the way it is, and we'll go back with another amendment later on, you know, we'll talk with the Brookdale people and see if we can't satisfy them in that regards.
Is Brookdale okay with that?
Please.
We are, we are.
Lisa?
I, I, I would not be in, in favor of, if we can fix it before we pass it, I would be in favor of it going back to committee for further discussion, let's get the wording correct, and then bring it back in front of this body for a vote, that would be my recommendation.
Will you make a motion to that effect?
That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Yes, Lisa, I had one question, if you could scroll up to the top of the ordinance, adding just a blanket statement there for hotels as a permitted use, I know at our prior, our prior hearing, we approved an extended, larger boutique-style hotel to facilitate a, a smaller increase of rooms. Is this adding just any, any and all size or quantity of, of hotels to be permitted in this development, or am I just completely reading that the wrong way?
No, this would add hotels as a permitted use.
Uh, so, yeah, there's, there's no restrictions on the size or quantity of, of hotels within the development?
There would not be. Well, it would be within transect five only.
Right.
But as far as within that transect, it's hotels.
But there are height restrictions.
There are height restrictions. Yeah, none, none of that has changed, but, but you're correct, it's, it's hotels, period, within transect five.
What are the height restrictions in that area?
Four-story.
Four stories.
John, in transect five, what are the height restrictions, is it four-story? So that, that's not changing, but.
May I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
Is our failure to pass this, John, gonna hold up construction or development in any way? We, we, okay, that's, that's sealed the deal, John.
Uh, any further discussion? The, the, uh, motion is to send this back to committee for, um, for further study and, uh, and, and additions to reflect what we've been talking about tonight. Um, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, and I would like to request, um, when we have a zoning amendment come, come up, sometimes the discussion gets in depth up here, and, uh, those of us who are on the zoning committee will have already seen it, um, uh, and talked about it in committee meeting, but the others haven't. If we could, in the future, have a copy of what we're changing, a hard copy on each person's place, I think we all would appreciate that, and maybe even have it sent to us, um, to everybody, whether you're on the zoning committee or not, uh, prior, so we can print it out ourselves, but don't depend on us to bring it with us for discussion.
I'll ask Kimberly very nicely.
Okay. Okay, and if it, you know, if that won't work, just send it to us and, and tell us, we gotta print it out ourselves.
We can do both, that's not a problem.
But we, we, you know, sometimes it's confusing for, for us up here, and, and we'd like to have it written in front of us, so we don't have to keep asking you. Okay. Um, is, that's our last item on zoning, and is, is that the end of your report? Okay, our next item is invocation and extension of bonds, and, uh, we're going to give Jim one more night off on this, I think, and after this, it's your, it's your responsibility, but tonight, it's Michael's. I don't know, we'll let y'all decide about that in the future. Okay, Michael, would you give us the invocations and extensions?
Yeah, we just recommend the invocation of items one through five.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and is there any further meeting, uh, business to come before the meeting? Then we are adjourned.